Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the North Brunswick Township Board of Education Regular Public Meeting. Today is Wednesday, December 18th. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ali.
Here.
Mr. Brockman. Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori. Dr. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Webb.
Here.
We have a bar.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Monday, January 29th, 2024, and Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 in the following manner. Posted on the bulletin board, reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick; mailed to the home news Tribune, Star Ledger, NJ.com, and the clerk of the township of North Brunswick; and delivered to the nine duly-elected board members. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see a full house for our last meeting of the year. It's definitely been a long year, but it's been a great year for this district as well as this board. And we are here tonight to have a great presentation to celebrate some successes that are happening in our high school. And so while you're all here, I'd want to wish everyone a very happy holiday season, a very happy new year, and we all look forward to being back here in 2025. So I will turn it over this time to Superintendent Chirica.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very excited to invite our athletic director, Mr. Morell, up to the podium to begin presenting our Fall Athletic Honors. And just so you know, apparently, it is a wired mic tonight, so nobody has to turn it on or off.[191.12][191.12](Laughter) Good news.
Good evening and welcome, my goal of the athletes, parents. Thank you for coming out today to celebrate some of the successes of our fall high school sports athletes. Thanks to the Board of Education, to Mrs. Chirica for all their help this season and all the support that they continue to give throughout the course of the school year. So this year, we saw some success. We had 20 All-Division High School athletes for the fall season. We had one All-County athlete. And our cross-country team, boys and girls, both won their divisions and were also awarded with the Sportsmanship Award. So we've seen some good successes this year.[238.12][238.12](Applause) First up, I'd like to introduce our girls' soccer coach, Coach Megan Carroll.
Hi, everybody. I'm Megan Carroll. I'm the head soccer coach at the high school. So I have two girls we are recognizing tonight, Jillian Fisher and Noemi Hernandez. So Jill is a senior. She's beyond deserving of All-White Division this season. She's made an impression on many of the GMC coaches who have recognized her for her consistency in our defense. I consider her to be our defensive stronghold. Coaches have made many comments on numerous occasions throughout our season regarding her gamemanship and her talent. She kept our defense in line and got us organized to play against our strongest opponents. Her leadership in the back made her a true asset to our defense and to our team as a whole. She was also able to use her leadership abilities as one of our captains this year. As a player, Jill is composed and a quick decision-maker, which makes her a difficult player to go against. She's very deserving of All-White Division due to her continuous commitment to her own development and her commitment to our team and their success. Noemi Hernandez is one of our most versatile players. She's played all over the field in a multitude of positions, on the offense and the defensive ends, literally every position. Her dedication to her personal development as a player is unmatched. Furthermore, her talent has been seen by various coaches in the GMC as well. She is a key player that makes a difference no matter where she plays in the field. She's also a leader and will serve as a captain our next season. Moreover, Noemi plays with all of her heart. She gives it all, at least everything, on the field. This tenacity in a player is not something you can teach, it's something you just innately have. And when she's on the field, she puts her... Excuse me. When she's on the field, she continues to... I wrote that wrong, so...[377.21][377.21](Laughter) Backspace.[379.21][379.21](Laughter) I look forward to seeing her continue to develop as a player, a young woman. And she's a junior, so lucky for me, I get her again next year. And unlucky for me, Jill will be graduating in the spring. So we lose some, but we still have Noemi next year, which is a good thing. So congratulations for all.[400.02][400.02](Applause)
Coach Carroll will also be presenting for Coach Mike Warhol, the boys' coach. So she'll be at here presenting as well.
So there are two boys that Coach Warhol wanted me to speak about. Hayden McCarthy. Hayden McCarthy's high school soccer career is a testament to his dedication and skill. As a four-year varsity player, he showcased his talent on the field in one of the most competitive conferences in the state. Over the course of his career, Hayden recorded an impressive 13 goals and seven assists, numbers that reflect his ability not only to score, but also to create opportunities for his teammates. His strategic understanding of the game and relentless work ethic allow him to consistently perform at a high level, earning him respect from coaches and players outside of the North Brunswick program. We will miss Hayden in the program next year, a tremendous talent that is nearly impossible to replace, and we wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors. The next...[498.83][498.83](Applause) is Ivan Pineda. Has showcased remarkable talent in his second year as a soccer player, netting an impressive five goals throughout the season. His ability to read the game and exceptional technical skills have made him a standout player on the field. Beyond his goal-scoring prowess, Pineda's potential shines through in his strategic understanding of the game. He possesses the rare ability to create opportunities, making him a valuable asset to his team. As he continues to develop and gain experience, there is no doubt that he will refine his skills and elevate his game even further. Pineda's passion for soccer, coupled with his natural talent, points to a promising future. With continued hard work and determination, he is poised to become a formidable force in the sport for his remaining years at NJSD.
Come on up. Presenting for this cross-country, both cross-country is going to be Coach Grimes, who will be standing in for Coach Mark McGaglin, who was unable to be here with us. Coach Grimes, no stranger to being here. Thanks for joining us in the fall as well.
Good evening. Yeah, Coach, I was going to say, Coach McGalvey has contributed his daughter because of the infant, and she had shots today, and his wife gave it to me.[620.04][620.04](Laughter) He got the diarrhea, so...[622.91][622.91](Laughter) He's short of all of those. Cross-country, go ahead, go on up for last week. So this is a great season. It's been about five or six years... Okay, give them a second, please. Five or six years since the boys' cross-country team has won the division, and this has their first division title for the girls' in school history. So it's a great season this year. We have... All right, well, let's talk about Yasha. Yasha, she's the lead member for the girls' team. She's actually the strongest. She's one of the top girls in the entire division and pretty close to being one of the top girls in the entire county. Billy, as well, is one of the top guys in the division, and if he keeps up, he'll be one of the top guys in county. This other man right here, the senior, is playing... He's actually more of a middle-distance guy, stepped up for the team this year to help the cross-country team get over the hump. And he's currently being recruited by several schools in track, Division One schools. So we're going to be sad losing him, but we still got two more seasons to go with that. And that's Coach McGalvey on the end. He comes up with the workouts with Ash and Vivia tonight, so we did, because Coach McGalvey is the same height as him.[693.41][693.41](Laughter) So he's here. He comes up with the workouts. He's a lot my class in 2013, so he goes a lot personally with us putting this together. My job is just to make sure the tank is supplied with air and ice. And lastly, we have our Sportsmanship Award. I'd like to point out, this is a real conspiracy, the track coaches. So they gave it to cross-country, so I think they like...
It's likely the last time I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, that's actually why I came to San Diego, because I might have asked you to put a award. Not because of me, they just... But I don't know what they did, but that's the cross-country season. I'm sorry, there's another young lady that also made up the whole division. That's her mom, Gabriela Juarez. She unfortunately is sick, so she couldn't be here, but she acts as one of our primary scores, so she's only a sophomore. So it might be sad, because we got two more years of her, or three seasons, so we're very excited. Next up, we have Coach Saipon for our football team. Football players should come up. Well, thank Super Ten Chirica, Ms. Toth, and all the board members. They were at my football there two weeks ago, and they're probably like, "Oh, my God, I almost got called." You all here? We're not the best, now. We're shipping over to home. These players, starting with my juniors, Zach Saipon and Brian Gomez. Lucky to have them back for another year. These guys, not only being very active in the community, a lot of community servicing that we do, gaining all conference. We play in the big Central Football Conference, also getting All-County honors for all middle sex. But we return both these guys. These guys are the heart and soul of our team next year, our leaders on our team, the middle of our defense. And I'm really proud of Zach and Brian, played this year. So that is Zach Saipon and Brian Gomez. And for seniors, again, awesome job getting honors for the Big Central Conference, also All-County honors, but in no particular order. Abdul Carnabo, who was also our Defensive Player of the Year this year, with the way he performed on the field. Naiene Houston was our Special Teams Player of the Year this year, some exciting plays that he made, a lot of return touchdowns and whatnot. Abdul, I won't say anything about him, but just played football the right way. He played it the right way, and he was tough. Like team TFLs and sacks, it's a pleasure to watch him play. I don't want to see him leave, but he is. Mr. Jahir Dawood now. Mr. Jahir Dawood is also continuing with his career at Penn University next fall. Committed to science. He's also a recipient of the Bill Denny Football Award that Rutgers gives out to scholar athletes, and which I was at a meeting on Monday at Rutgers, might be up for one of the Super 100 football players in the state of New Jersey. Jahir is also our... Tom Caroma, which was also not only... Two years, you know, which was four, I talked about that, but one of our starting point cards on basketball for four years also. But Tom, me, for the two years of this year, probably one of the most special, productive, and exciting seasons in one year for a regular football player. Was absolutely outstanding, played receiver, running back, and quarterback, kicker, punter. He kind of did it all for us. He was also our Offensive Player of the Year. On top of all four of these... All four, one, two, I... One, two, three, four, five, six. The last month have been very... Highly... The colleges have been coming in looking at these guys for the last month, so very exciting time for them, looking and seeing where they're going to go for the future. So I respect that, I love all these guys, and congrats and good luck in the future. Next up, we will have Coach Trey Williams, who will be speaking for Coach Brian Muller, who was unable to be here as well. Girls' all year.
Good evening. My name is Mark Holmes, and I'm the girls' volleyball assistant coach. Coach Brian Muller, head coach Brian Muller, sends his apologies for not being able to attend tonight, but he did leave me with some remarks saying about our two All-White Division winners for the fall. And so I'd like to, you know, give them both an introduction. First, we have Ana Calgrias, who is not with us tonight, but I still want to acknowledge. Ana is a senior this year at high school. Ana's been a part of our program for four years, as well as being a varsity team for three years. Ana has been named captain for the past two years and starting for the last two years as well. Ana has been a great role model for our younger programs, both during the regular season as well as our offseason. I would also like to acknowledge Ana was elected to this year's North Brunswick Township High School as representative for the NJISA-sponsored National Association of Girls and Women's Sports Day. Congratulations, Ana, on your accomplishments and earning All-White Division. Next, we have Jordan Teravogia. Jordan's a senior this year at high school. Jordan has been a part of the program for four years, as well as being one of the varsity team for four years. She's been three years starter for us. The biggest thing I have to say about Jordan is that she works very hard in the offseason, lifting, playing for an outside field team, and attending a ton of camps and clinics. All of her hard work paid off to earn this honor. Congratulations, Jordan, for earning All-White Division.
And we conclude with Coach Mark Fitzpatrick for our girls' tennis team.
It's been a couple of years for our team. We were up for the red division for the last few years, and for the last few years, we had no wins. This year, we're in our brightest spots with Rashida. She was 12-3 this season, and with only one loss in the weight division. She lost. She played second singles for one match and also played first singles, I'm sorry, second singles for us in JMSA. Rashida is a freshman, came to our team and transition seamlessly. She felt she walked right in, working with seniors and everyone else and the rest of our team. And we're really looking forward to having her for another three years as a really bright light. We won four of our last five matches this season, and we're looking for Rashida to lead the way for the next few years.
Again, thank you to all of you. City of winter and spring season as well. Thank you.
And a final congratulations to all of you. Being an athlete as well as being a student is a very important part of the high school life, and we're very proud of you guys for balancing those two things and being a scholar athlete and also being an outstanding athlete. So thank you, parents, for supporting them, and thank you for coming out tonight. Anybody else?
Thank you all. Congratulations again. All right, we will continue with the rest of our regular meeting. Dr. Patel, would you please take item number six?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the board's minutes, regular public meeting minutes on November 20, 2024, executive meeting minutes on November 20, 2024, and the board retreat meeting minutes on November 18, 2024.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All the minutes are accepted.
Thank you. Do we have any communications this evening? We do, actually. I received a letter from the North Brunswick Food Bank. To everyone at the North Brunswick Township Board of Education, please accept my deep appreciation for your extremely generous donation to the food bank, which was collected at your recent Jeans' Day. Since 1996, we have provided hope, helping other people eat for thousands of North Brunswick residents. There have been challenges through the years, a public health crisis, a natural disaster that destroyed our food, refrigerators and freezers, and required us to locate to our current location, and times when shelves were practically empty, but we never closed our doors. Thanks to your support, we are able to provide food to our neighbors in need. On behalf of our food bank volunteers, I want to extend to you our heartfelt gratitude, along with our wish that you have a happy and healthy holiday and new year. Kathy Aruda, President, North Brunswick Food Bank.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. At this time, we'll move to item number eight, our reports. I'm assuming we can jump right to administrative?
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
All right. Good evening to all our families, guests, and viewers here tonight. Over the last year, the board and administration have been working diligently with our architect to assess and prepare a full assessment of our district facilities and their needs in order to ensure that our buildings remain safe, comfortable environments for our students and staff. This little notebook, not too big, you know, nice thick binder, entitled "A Comprehensive Facility Study and Proposed Recommendations: A Long-Range Facility Plan," was the culmination of a building walkthroughs completed by each of our principals with our architect, Pete Campisano of USA Architects. As you can see, this is a very thick binder that is truly a comprehensive map of the conditions of each building. It's internal and external, and provides suggestions for priorities in each building. With this roadmap in hand, the board and I have worked diligently with our architect to identify vital infrastructure work that needs to be done in our schools. Additionally, as a board, we have also been aware of a rare opportunity to reinvest in our district this spring with a facilities referendum. Each year, the district pays on bonds that have been financed for a myriad of past facility projects. Unlike a township or local municipality, a school district is not permitted to finance bonds without a vote by the community, called a referendum. This spring, some of those bonds mature, and in other words, part of our mortgage will have been paid off. This gives us a unique opportunity to present a referendum to the North Brunswick Township community that will provide for an investment in the much-needed infrastructure in our schools at zero cost to the taxpayer. After many meetings and discussions throughout the late summer and fall, the board has determined that the most needed infrastructure work for our buildings. And this fall, this will fall into two referendum questions. The first will be for $53 million and focuses on vital HVAC, heating and cooling work in all of our buildings, a building envelope repairs to the brickwork at both MBTHS and Linwood to keep our buildings safe and secure, and on the upgrade of bathrooms in our buildings to ensure that they are ADA or handicap compliant with federal law, which they currently are not. Then there will be a second question for $11 million that can only pass if the first question passes. This second question asks for this money to replace outdated windows and doors and locks throughout our facilities, improving both energy efficiency and safety. We submitted 23 required plans to the NJDOE in September and received a final approval on all these plans. This approval indicates that not only are these projects going to be at zero impact to the taxpayer in North Brunswick, but they are also eligible for 40% facility funding by the New Jersey Department of Education. As stewards of the North Brunswick taxpayer, this is very important to our board and our administration. Following our general meeting, the board will go into closed session to review the proposed motion one last time, and we will come back to take a vote on it. Presuming this passes this evening, beginning in January, we'll begin a full outreach to our community, parents, PTOs, and staff to fully explain each part of the referendum and the important implications of the vote. We very much look forward to engaging fully with the community, to describe and show the infrastructure needs of our school district, and the best way that the community can support these needs and keep our North Brunswick Township Schools' facilities safe and healthy for our children for years to come. Additionally, beyond that, schools will close this Friday with an early dismissal and reopen on Thursday, January 2nd. I want to wish all of our North Brunswick Township families, staff, and students a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year. Enjoy the break with your families. That's it for my report this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. At this time, we will look to our students. Good evening.
Good evening. So we have kind of a bit of a longer list tonight. So on Friday, November 22nd, SGO and the Class of 2026 hosted a dodgeball tournament. Eight teams participated, and it was a very fun night. The final game was definitely something to watch, and everybody stormed the court after it was actually hilarious. December 6th was a very busy night at MBTHS. The Class of 2026 hosted a movie night where they showed Elf. And the Boys and Girls Basketball Team hosted their first-ever annual Take Flight Night. And so basically, the Girls' Basketball Team played an inner-squad scrimmage, the Boys' Basketball Team played, and then there was an alumni game that was played afterward. So we had a ton of people in the gym, and then some people came for one of the games and then went to the movie night, and it was just a lot of people at MBTHS. The Class of 2026... night, and it was just a lot of people at MBTHS. The Class of 2028 and 2026 both hosted successful morning fundraisers. They sold chocolate chips, chocolate chip cookies, candy canes, hot chocolate chips, a bunch of different snacks to start off the day on a good mood. And then SGO, Key Club, and the National Honor Society all participated in the Salvation Army Adopt an Angel program. Over 45 angels were given holiday presents with the assistance of our students.
And then this week, or actually last week, our band and chorus performed an amazing holiday show on Thursday, December 12. And then this week, they performed for elementary students at our school. All the little kids were so excited to hear the band play, and they were just so cute, like leaving the school. On Friday, the high school students are also eagerly anticipating the holidays in the Commons during all the lunches, which is when the band sets up in the Commons, and for all four lunch periods, they play holiday music, and everyone just has a good time with their friends. This week, SGO is also sponsoring Holiday Spirit Week, so there's different themed days to get everyone excited for winter break. So, Monday was Merry Monday, so you wear colors with different holidays. You could wear blue and white for Hanukkah, red and green for Christmas, stuff like that. Tuesday was Santa's helpers, so people dressed up as elves, reindeers, everyone got super into it. Wednesday, or today was What Not to Wear Wednesday, so it was ugly Christmas sweaters, and it was really fun to see. The hallways were lit up. And then tomorrow is tree toppers and socks, so like headbands like reindeers and stuff like that, and then you wear like fun Christmas, or really any holiday socks. And then Friday is pajama day, so the Commons will be filled with like all these different sorts of colorful pajamas, and it'll be so much fun. And then when we return from winter break, SGO will be hosting our Winter Pep Week and Pep Rally to honor our winter athletes. And that's all. Thank you.
Great. It's nice to see that some of these time-honored traditions are still going on, as some of the alumni could definitely attest to. And Mr. Wen, thanks for participating in Spirit Day today. We didn't get the memo, but let us know next time. All right, thanks, ladies. We will move to our committee reports. This evening, we'll start with Mr. Ali. He has a quick update from New Jersey School Boards and the county.
Okay, so at our last school board meeting, the county school board meeting, it was on, it was Thursday, December 12 at 6:45 PM. I unfortunately didn't make it. I wasn't feeling pretty well. But I reviewed some of the recording, some of the notes. It was essentially talking to us and just helping guide us through the process of the school budget approval, because it's a collaborative process between us and superintendent. But the one thing about it, one of the underlying tones is that it's important. It's crucial, because without the budget, you can't really run an effective district. And recently, with some of the budgetary conflicts that we've just been going on with the state and federal government, it's really important that we all work together, and we know what's important from y'all in the next coming months and days. And with the recent legislation that was passed, A3446 and S2421, the Freedom to Read Act, which prevents book bans, some of these things may be coming up in our communities and just at home, so just be cognizant and be aware and just lean on a lookout, because some of these things may not be impacting our school district and some of our students yet, but it's happening all around the state. So, just be, you know, keep on a lookout and just be aware, and just, you know, get involved more, if you can, with your family and your own students, just to be aware that a lot of what's going on at the state and federal level has an impact on the way we do our budget, and it's going to be up for discussion certainly in the next few years. So, just, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to our regular committees. Dr. Patel, would you like to start us off with education?
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. So, the education committee met on Wednesday, December 11. We discussed the District Arts Festival, which will be held on March 27, 2025, at the high school, which will have performances and display artwork. In regards to planning for the 2025-2026 school year, there'll be new courses at the high school, AP Environmental Science, CP Physical Science, Construction 2, which will replace Advanced Wood Course, Coastal Marine Science, it's a renaming of Comparative Zoology course, AP Cybersecurity and Kickstart, it's a new course which will allow students to work towards industry certifications and internships, Cybersecurity Gaming Animation, which is renaming and already operates under the Principles of Engineering course, research, and Seminars in Biological Science Honors. We talked a little bit about the preschool partner visits that Ms. Shorofa and her team did last month, and they went very well. We also talked about the Life Lines Curriculum and received an update on McKinni-Vento. We had no policy readings at this meeting, and that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Keefe will be filling in for Mr. Brockman for Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President. The Human Resources Community Relations Committee met on Wednesday, December 11 to discuss various personnel topics. For any of those that are on the agenda tonight who are resigning, the board thanks them for their service, and we wish them well. There are also new staff and new substitutes on tonight's agenda. Welcome to the district, and we look forward to having you here in North Brunswick. As of the date of our committee meeting, any remaining vacancies for the 24-25 school year continue to be posted on the district website, social media pages, and displayed in all of our buildings. For teaching positions, whether alternate route or traditional route, candidates are encouraged to apply. We discuss vacancies, along with how those vacancies and leaves of absences positions will be filled. There are some reassignments on tonight's agenda, as well as coaching and club advisor appointments. We thank our staff for taking on these new roles. Mrs. Keefe also shared with the committee that there are several support staff that have now qualified for additional stipends by obtaining other licenses and certifications. Congratulations to all of you, and we can appreciate your continued development and your professional growth. Finally, we discussed the hiring of the English supervisor at the high school, and that will be finalized in the coming weeks. And lastly, we look forward to the district website updates. We were presented with a video montage of students and staff that is now the main landing page. That concludes your report for HR, Madam President.
Thank you. Yes, it looks great. Thank you. And finally, we will move to Mr. Carter, who will be filling in for Mr. Lagori for Business Operations.
Thank you, Madam President. The Business Operations Committee met Wednesday, December 11. We have a motion in tonight's agenda, Finance Section 3, 3F, to approve the replacement of concrete in Parsons Courtyard and sections of sidewalk. We also received status updates on the audit, the Linwood Schiller, some roofing repairs, some additional repairs at the elementary school, and district-wide repairs on the HVAC controls and water testing.
Great. Thank you. All right, at this time, Ms. Keefe, would you please take item nine?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative student and committee reports.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
All the reports are accepted.
Thank you. At this time, we will review our agenda. As stated at the beginning of the meeting and previous meetings, we do receive a copy of the agenda prior to this evening's meeting, so at this time, we will go page by page. Any changes are listed in bold, as we know. So, pages three and four, five and six, pages seven and eight, nine and 10, 11 and 12, 13 and 14, 15 and 16, and finishing up on page 17. At this time, we'll open it up to the public to have a public session on agenda items only at this time. If anyone from the public would like to come up and address the board, we ask that you just state your name, and you'll be given three minutes to speak on any agenda items. Seeing none, can I please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. Vice President James, would you please take item 13?
Happy to. I make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items: Personnel, Curriculum Miscellaneous, Finance Items 1 through 3, and Transportation.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was second? Oh, thank you, Mr. Carter. All right, I'm going to take roll call now. Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
All the motions are passed and approved.
Thank you. At this time, we'll jump all the way to page 16 in our generally short agenda to wrap up the year. And at this time, we will have a public session on any matter. At this time, if anyone from the public would like to come and address the board, we just ask that you state your name, and you'll be given three minutes on any matter. Good evening, Ms. Pazner.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Beth Pazner. I am the president of the North Brunswick Township Education Association. Good to see you all tonight. So, sorry, even though he's not here, we do want to wish Mr. Brockman well, and thank him for his service on the North Brunswick Township Board of Education. The MBTA is extremely pleased that the Board of Ed has taken on the extremely challenging task of holding a referendum for the items that are desperately needed in our schools and our buildings. HVAC, updated bathrooms, masonry, windows, while not normally on the radar of our parents, these are all essential to the education of our students and the safety of both students and staff. Let's start with HVAC alone. The need for new and updated HVAC systems are desperately needed in our schools. It's hard for someone who doesn't spend their time in the classroom to understand the impact that extremely cold or hot temperatures have on the learning of our students. As an example, when we returned from Thanksgiving break, we had classrooms in our high school that were registering at 36 degrees. And just on a side note, the reason we know it was 36 degrees is because they were science classrooms, and they all have thermometers and Celsius, and this history teacher had to convert 4 degrees Celsius to Fahrenheit. That's how we know it was 36 degrees. Teachers and students alike wore winter coats and blankets in our classrooms, and classes of students needed to be moved to areas like the Commons that have class, which all of you have seen the Commons, and know that's not a conducive place to hold class. Likewise, you can imagine the difficulty in setting up a classroom when the thermostat in your classroom reads 85 degrees, and the impact that has on students in those classrooms. With all the different issues that make teaching difficult, extreme temperatures should not be one of them. Likewise, the average parent probably doesn't think about the impact of masonry or windows in their child's school, but just like how improper HVAC circulation can cause health issues, wet ceiling tiles and carpets caused by leaks do the same. The MBTA would like the Board of Education and the North Brunswick community to know that we fully support a referendum that works to improve the conditions of our school. You as Board of Ed can count on our full support, and we'll work with you to the best of our ability to ensure that this referendum is approved. I would like to wish you all a very happy, very healthy holiday season and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Ms. Pazner. Your support means everything to us. We really appreciate that. You know, the next couple of months, getting out to our community members and parents and staff and PTO that, you know, live in this town, it's a big ask, and we really appreciate that you are fully on board with us. So, we thank you. Anyone else at this time? I'd also just like to say, you know, thank you to Mr. Brockman as well. I know that he's not here with us this evening. He had a work commitment to attend, but, you know, Dave has been with this Board of Education for many years, a couple of terms now, and he's really done a lot for the students, the staff, the community of North Brunswick, bringing his expertise and his construction background. I know he was a huge part of the building of our new middle school a couple of years ago, and so, he has been a mentor to me, a friend to me, and I know many of, you know, others on the board as well. We will definitely miss him, and we wish him well with his future endeavors and having a little bit more free time on his hands. So, we hope you got the message, Dave, and we'll definitely miss you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Can I please have a motion to close this public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Ooh. Who was the first one?
I think that was Ms...
Oh, okay, Ms. James. You can get that one. And I think over here was Mr. Ali. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to go into closed session. Whereas, Section 8 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas, this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist, now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here-and-after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: financial matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above-stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Can we please have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We can go to closed session.
Thank you all.
Have a great holiday, everyone.
Thank you.